Thanks to you all for being here and to those at home, thanks for watching including Noel, our city manager who's a little bit under the weather. I'm sure he's watching somewhere. So, thanks y'all.
Good evening. Notice of a public meeting of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville pursuant to Chapter 551 Title V of the Texas Government Code. The Texas Open Meetings Act notice is hereby given that the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, in accordance with Article 5, Section 12 of the Charter of said city, will convene a regular meeting on Tuesday, November 5th, 2019 at 5:00 PM in the Commission chambers on the second floor of Brownsville City Hall Old Federal Building located at 1001 East Elizabeth Street, Brownsville, Cameron County, Texas. Would everyone please rise for the invocation and the pledge of allegiance?
Let's pray. Father God, we thank you for your love, your grace, and your mercy. You're the God who knows the beginning from the end, the one with all true wisdom. And so tonight we ask you for wisdom for our mayor and our city commissioners and everyone who presents anything tonight. Lead and guide each department head. And Lord God, we ask you to continue to keep us in unity, doing what's best for the city of Brownsville, in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On Texas land, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one unit indivisible.
At this time, we are going to present the proclamation for Municipal Court Week. If you all would please come up.
Yeah, thank you. I'll read it. Yeah. No, I got one. Just hold it out, face it out. Ready? Okay. Mayor?
Yes?
A proclamation of the City Commission of Brownsville, Texas, designating November 4th through 8th, 2019 as Municipal Court Week. Whereas the Brownsville Municipal Court, a time honored and vital part of local government, has been in existence since December 26th, 1941. Whereas the Brownsville Municipal Court represents the judicial branch of the city of Brownsville, the function of the municipal court is to process and adjudicate cases that are filed, including parking traffic and city ordinance violations and Class C misdemeanors. Whereas municipal courts play a significant role in preserving public safety and promoting quality of life in Texas, more people come into contact with municipal court than any other Texas courts combined. And public impression of the Texas judicial system is largely dependent upon the public's experience in municipal courts. Whereas procedures for the Brownsville Municipal Court operations are set forth in the Texas Code of Criminal Procedure and other laws of the state of Texas. And whereas the city of Brownsville is committed to the notion that our legal system is based on the principle that an independent, fair, and competent judiciary will interpret and apply the laws that govern us and that judges and court personnel should comply with the law as well, and act in a manner that promotes public confidence in the integrity and impartiality of the judiciary. Now therefore, we, the members of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, by virtue of the authority vested in the Charter, by the Charter of said city, and on behalf of all of our citizens, do hereby designate November 4th through 8th, 2019, as Municipal Court Week, recognizing the accomplishments of Texas municipal courts and saluting their critical role in preserving public safety, protecting the quality of life in Texas communities, and deterring future criminal behavior done on this fifth day of November, 2019, signed by the members of the commission and city secretary.
We want to thank you on behalf of some of our staff here. I'm Judge Albert Devlin. This is Judge Devlin. Our staff, some of them are the more. There's about 30 members of our staff, the municipal court. And we, like my predecessor, claimed to you in the resolution, we handle all of the court cases. We are the judicial branch. Just like the federal law right there, there's the legislative, the executive, and judicial. We are the judicial branch. And so, we are here to serve you, the citizens, and represent the city. And there's, some of you may know Judge Benny O'Chows from four years ago. He was a judge for a hundred years. He claimed to be the friendly judge of the government. And so, we claim to be the friendly judges from Brownsville. We're here to serve you and represent your interests. It's an honor to receive the award. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
And we got in here and we have open house this week. So, come by any day of the week. We'll be there all day. We have a nice table set up with the goodies and some coffee and stuff. Come by and visit. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for your work and your services.
Next, we have the public comment period. The person that signed up is Ms. Karen French. If you would please come up to the podium.
Yes, hello everyone. My name is Karen French and our family lives in Rio de Janeiro. What's come to our attention lately is the new lighting that's being put up in Rio de Janeiro, which is a kind of very strong 4,000 Kelvin blue-white lighting. It's very cheap and harsh. And it's replacing the old sodium pressure vapor lamps that are kind of a pinky gold. These new lights are dangerous and we want to see them stop being put up. Just to have a temporary embargo of replacing these very harsh, dangerous lights and just keep the sodium pressure vapor lamps until the city can buy lamps that are of much better quality. They don't cost much more, but they're F LEDs or PC amber LEDs. And these are safe for animals and for people. The lights that are being put up now are extremely harsh and they're bad for people's eyes. I have eye disease. I have glaucoma. My husband has macular degeneration and cataracts. And these lights shine in our eyes and cause us a lot of pain when we go on walks or go bicycling. I have to wear sunglasses at night to protect my eyes. It's also very bad for children. If they look at these lights, their retinas can be permanently damaged. The damage that occurs to the retinas under these extremely strong LEDs, which are 4,000 Kelvin, can cause permanent damage to these children and is irreversible. And it also damages your eyes too. There's no reason to have these extremely strong, cheap lights that are 4,000 Kelvin. These are what Walmart uses in their parking lots. It's not suitable for residential. Now, I have copies of, I should have made more copies. I'll bring more next time. We have these phosphor converted amber LEDs and filtered LEDs. And these are, these provide a warm white LED of 3,000 Kelvin or less with a filter cutting out all blue light to less than 1% or 2%. And this is safe for humans and also makes it look so much nicer. The way they have the streets lit down on Des Moines and Calvary, Calvary Court and stuff in Rio de Janeiro, it looks horrible with the new lighting. It looks like a penitentiary. I feel like I should be down on my knees with my hands over my head. You know, I'm gonna be strip searched or something. Or I'm either dying, I need to have an appendectomy done under these lights. I could sit and read a newspaper or hem pants under these new lights. They're too strong. They're also very bad for birds. They're very confusing for birds. Birds get diverted and confused. So, anyway, I think my time's up. But I just wanted to ask you not to put up any more of these extremely strong lights and to give a chance to look at alternatives which don't cost any more. And the increase in quality of life in Rio de Janeiro and all over Brownsville. I want it all over Brownsville. I don't want these hard lights on Brownsville at all. Okay.
Thank you.
So, I was gonna give one copy to the city manager?
Give it to the city secretary.
Yeah, we got copies of that actually.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Helen, you might talk about our future plans, about some of the LEDs that did...
Right. We are working with the Public Utility, PUB, here in Brownsville regarding LED lights. I will convey this information to them so that we can maybe possibly relook at that street and look at the rollout of all the lights that we use. Because I understand the lumens and the light and it's something that we do need to consider. Okay?
Thank you.
Next, we have Mr. Stephen Bailey. If you would please come to the podium.
Good evening. My name's Stephen R. Bailey. And today would have been my grandfather, Captain George W. Bailey's 99th birthday. Unfortunately, he passed at the age of 96 on February 6th, 2017. I do appreciate you all taking the time to listen to me this evening. And the reason I had asked, requested to come forward is to express my concerns over the City of Brownsville Engineering Department. About a year ago to date, on November 15th, 2018, I submitted a street name request change on Coma Street, which is located in Olmito. Under the, I guess, under the City of Brownsville jurisdiction, we fall on that fine line between Cameron County and City of Brownsville. Now, the purpose for my request was, one, in honor of my grandfather, of whom raised me since I was eight months old. To date, I just have my grandmother left. They moved here in 1975. He was a veteran of World War II Korea, in which he retired from the US Army. Then, he worked for the Department of State and went to Vietnam where he met my grandmother. He adopted my mother at the age of two years old and brought them back to the United States during the Vietnam War period. And he started a sign business here in the City of Brownsville, actually in Olmito. Bill Bailey Signs, in which he made numerous signs for the City of Brownsville, some of which include the City of Brownsville itself, Dean Porter Park, Gladys Porter Zoo, Brownsville Police Department, numerous other venues, businesses, and so forth. And on the street itself, we're not talking about a major street. I understand there's another street in question at the moment. But this street, my grandmother owns property on both sides of the street. We're the only residents on Coma Street, in Olmito, Texas. There's only one house on the whole street. It stretches from the Frontage Road to Old Military 77, in which we own our residence, which is on one side, and we own the other side as well. And I had submitted this request to Mr. Eddie Santian at the Engineering Department of City of Brownsville. And I have followed up with him every single month to no avail. And I keep getting the runaround. So, I'm very dissatisfied with that. And another reason for the request is there is already a Coma Street in Brownsville in the southmost area. And a few years back, when we needed 911 assistance from my grandfather when he was still living, the ambulance went to that address instead of ours. So, it prolonged the care that my grandfather urgently needed at that time. So, the request was to either rename the street Captain Bailey Street or Drive, something to that effect. Nothing too exaggerated. But again, my grandparents built their residence there in 1983. We've called it home. It's the only home I've ever lived in, the only home I know. And I would just like that, in memory of him, to leave our remark in Olmito where I grew up. Thank you.
Thank you. Can somebody please make sure this is followed up?
Sure, I have his information. We'll definitely contact you after and review what was submitted initially.
Right. Thank you, Ms. Bailey.
And also, maybe if we could expedite it, just in case their family needs assistance and is not able to receive it because it's dispatched to Southmost.
Okay, we will look into it. Thanks.
Thanks.
Next, we have Mr. Jared Garcia. We'll move on to the next agenda. Next, we have the work session. Greater Brownsville Incentives Corporation Economic Development Strategic Plan.
Good evening, Mayor, City Commissioners, Commissioners. What I have here in front of you is the GBIC Strategic Plan. It was adopted by the GBIC Board of Directors on September, excuse me, October 17th of this year, just recently, the last meeting actually. Some of you have seen most of this presentation. Yet, when I first showed it to city management and to some of you, it wasn't yet adopted by the, by the new board. Now that we have a new board, we actually had our own work session. And now that the work session is over, the last actual GBIC Board meeting, they adopted it at that time. So, gonna start with the, with our mission. As you know, GBIC's mission is to foster growth here in the city through business development efforts, recruitment, and promoted expansion and retention of current businesses, and developing the environment for job creation and capital investment. If you were not aware, and I'm gonna guess it was around 2017, the GBIC Board at that time approved the Contracting of TIP Strategies, TIP Strategies, to come to Brownsville and do different community forums and create a strategic plan and present it to the board at that time. This is the outcome of that particular contract, TIP Strategies. During TIP Strategies', recommendation here, you can see that there was five strategic goals listed there. And from the strategic goals, what we did is we broke it down into sub-targets. And on the far right of the presentation is activities that already have been conducted in alignment to those five goals. And what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna go over each of the five in this particular order. So, you can see what the board has directed us to do. Again, this is a five-year plan, by the way. So, by no means are we going to try to tackle everything in the five years. We're gonna phase it out in those five years and not explain that as I go along. All this to say is that our hopes is that we can mitigate some of these targets, one of them being the per capita income here in Brownsville. We're thinking that if we do things right, that we can improve the per capita income in Brownsville through job creation and increased job salaries. We will work with, and we have been working with, with city management on our land use strategy, making sure that we are in alignment with the city's plan in that particular area. And we're creating a baseline in regards to workforce and education and the collaboration thereof. We know that there's a gap in skilled workers. As you know, also, we have some major projects coming, not only here, but in the port of Brownsville. We're hoping that our citizens from our own backyard assume those high-paid jobs. And we want to make sure we're ready for that. So, again, going with, going through those five targets, starting with the first one, workforce and education, highlighted in yellow are the three major items that are recommended by TIP Strategies. And in white text, you see items that we have already started. Do we grow our own strategy, for example, and I'll cover that in the next slide. Jet Grants, Jobs in Education for Texans, is a grant that will purchase advanced equipment for the schools. My understanding is that soon you'll hear BISD receives one of those grants, a little over 300,000. And we're working with TSC to also apply. It's for community colleges and ISDs. And we're working with TSC to apply for one of those as well. TIP is a Texas Industry Partnership Grant. We're trying to work more with local industry and make sure that we partner in the right way so that we can help create the right pipeline for them. And industry collaboration, you saw, maybe hopefully in the media recently, we received two big manufacturing robots. It's one of the examples that we'd like to create and scale here with local business and asking them to donate advanced equipment so then the schoolhouse can be used to help them prepare pipeline for the future. Skills development funding also, we're asking also Texas Workforce Commission to work with us in developing workers that are already employed and move them up in the ladder in each industry that we have here. And also PTEC Strategies. PTEC, if you're familiar with dual credit classes at the ISD, I think we've done that in Texas for the last four years at least. If a student takes a dual credit class, it's typically around academia, typically dual credit math, science, history, and the like. PTEC allows for dual credit in technology. And we think that that will help us move the pipeline a little bit faster, starting them earlier in high school. This is the We Grow Our Own. As you can see, on the far left, we have our partners. And on the top, you have the Continuum of our community. And what we did is we asked the community to work with us and collaborate with us and create larger partnerships so that we can hit particular targets. The targets are around education and workforce development. So, the ask is for industry partners to help us in this space, whether it's internships, teacher externships, realign their scholarships accordingly based on our strategy, give donations, open their doors for tours, and open the doors for career fairs and the like. So, happy to say that since its inception, we've received a Texas Economic Development Council's Workforce Excellence Award. So, it's a state-recognized strategy. It's community-driven and it's industry-led. And we hope that we create a larger pipeline so that we can have our own students assume the workforce of tomorrow, as I call it.
Really quickly, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
Is there, is there an apprenticeship component to that as well?
There is. So, the PTEC model allows for a high school student, after the Texas Labor Law, which is 16, to prepare them for a apprenticeship program. Yes, sir.
Okay, who's the partner gonna be on that? Because it looks like, I mean, all the industry you've identified here really do seem to be the major stakeholders. So, it looks like some of these are gonna have to step up because they're, they're not involved yet, right?
Definitely. Yes, sir. So, we actually had a industry-led forum last week when we invited our industry partners. We actually have about 85 on our list. And that's part of our business retention and expansion strategy to actually visit each one of these partners and ask them to join. And since that event, we've received about 35 commitments from 35 different companies. And you're right. So, typically, it was the big players like Keppel and Tata and CK. But since then, we've acquired many more partners. And we're looking forward to expanding that partnership.
Good.
Does that answer your question, sir?
The question. Why are all the boxes empty?
So, this is just a snapshot of example. But currently, currently, we have over 30, some boxes filled. This is just not updated. This is just...
And which, under which category does health and wellness fall?
In the adult layer, we've asked current employers to implement workforce strategies that allow their workers to be sustained long-term, and ask them to be in alignment with City of Brownsville's wellness programs. And we have had some success in some of those. And we can support those out.
Such as?
CK Technologies, for example, ask their, ask their team members to participate in City of Brownsville's initiatives. And if they do, they acknowledge them in their, in their profiles, in their, in their performance evaluations, that they are trying to sustain the social workers long-term. And that's just one example.
However, that particular, however, I would, I would very much recommend that these, these partners are encouraged not to just encourage their employees to participate, but they themselves participate in small, medium, or large gifts that sustain our programs. It's very easy to say, okay, I'll tell my staff to do it.
Right.
But they're not putting any skin in the game.
Right.
And that is something that's highly lacking.
Definitely. We'll work on that too. Thank you.
Ms. Galan, could you...
Are any of the internships paid?
The, we're working on the internship strategy that will get them to a paid status after high school. So, once, so, so right now, they're in high school. And once we move into, into, into the TSC layer, the third year, we're working on paid internships. Yes, we are. We're not there yet.
So, right now, though, do you offer internships to people who are in college or a TSC?
We've asked our, our partners to consider realignment, realigning their scholarships that they have currently. My ask to them was like, where do the scholarships and where do those students go to? And typically, they don't know where those students go because they don't keep track of them. So, I've asked them to realign that or rethink it to create strategies to where they move their scholarship to these programs like PTEC and allow those students to be paid as they go along. So, that just, we just started that conversation about three, four months ago. And we don't have any real results yet. But this definitely on our plate. This is just one example of PTEC. So, there's two PTEC schools in Brownsville now. One of them is Porter, that will focus on advanced manufacturing. The other one is Hannah, that would focus on medical biomed. For example, there's 16, I believe, PTEC schools in Dallas. And there's only five, I believe, in Region 1. Two are here in Brownsville. So, good for Brownsville and good on BISD to assume that leadership and create those two programs. And this is just an example of what it would look like. In the future, this could look like IT program, an energy program in alignment with the port projects, could be an advanced construction program, cybersecurity program, and the like. So, PTEC allows for any of those types of programs. So, right now, we just have two. BISD has agreed to look into having all their high schools and create PTEC programs as well. So, in the space of business retention and expansion, TIP Strategies recommends these two particular bullets. To be honest, GBIC is still fairly new after the BDC change. And we did not have a business retention and expansion program. We do now. We actually hired one head count to lead it. And that's God bless you sitting back here. And what we did is we identified through, through different associations and the like here, including the chamber, what are all business partners that we have here that are in alignment with a type A organization. And the strategy is to go and visit every single one and ask them questions like Commissioner just asked. Ask them these questions and then create the data. And then find out where is the real gap and where do we need to realign our narrative so that we can get these partners, and also to Commissioner Galan's point is where is it that we need to focus in a little bit better? Right now, we don't have all the data, but we're visiting all of these partners and creating that data through a, through a business survey. You can see an example of the survey here. We asked them a lot of questions. This is just one page of it. And you can see a list that we have, an actual list of all these partners we have to visit. So, the strategy is to visit at least three to four per week and try to complete all of them by the end of the year. Here's one example. Again, here are BISD students. I actually went to CK Technologies. And what I like about this is they opened their doors over the summer for a teacher to come in as a teacher extern and learn about what that business does so that they can translate it in the schoolhouse and make sure that the curriculum that they provide is in alignment with current and real-world industry needs. We'd like for this to happen across the board with many other industries, not just this one. Target industry recruitment, again, these are, these are five areas that are recommended by TIP Strategies. And we're, to tell you, Mayor, I believe you inquired about this particular meeting that we're having with BCIC and with City of Brownsville and GBIC together, to make sure that we don't overlap each other in these particular industries and that we stay in our lanes, that we're gonna come up with an agreement of what is really GBIC's niche and what should we stay in lead and what is a support role. And same thing with BCIC, same thing with the city. So, we've been working in that particular area for the last two months. And we're hoping that we're able to report to the commission what the findings are in that and what the, what the outcome will be. These are the five areas that are recommended by TIP Strategies. Advanced Industries, Heavy Industries, healthcare, food beverage, retail, and hospitals. I think we agree that if it's really heavy industries, the port should be considered and the like. So, those are the kinds of conversations that we're having collectively between the city management, BCIC, and GBIC. Sites and infrastructure, the three different areas that were recommended by TIP Strategies is protect the 16 and future industrial sites, capitalize on potential with the airport. And you see that already happening through the city's initiatives. And strengthen GBIC's relationships with real estate communities. So, we're also working with the city with an event. I'm looking at, I don't remember the date, but we have a, an event with realtors, investors, and brokers and the like, to invite them to Brownsville and show them what's available at the airport, what's available downtown, what's available for industries, and hopefully get some leads from that particular event. BCIC, the city, and GBIC are working together to have this event.
Yeah, the event is November 19th. It's a brokers development tour. In fact, the mayor's gonna give the welcome. And we're gonna highlight some of the sites available in Brownsville in coordination with our development partners.
Right.
Better make sure it's on my calendar.
It is.
So, again, that's just one, another of the TIP Strategy recommendation. This one I received from the city management is just an example of, from our industrial pie, what is GBIC's role? We're waiting... We're waiting and we're working with the city to figure out what is that target so that we can be in alignment to it. And as you know, currently, we have 5% land use from a tax-based perspective, it's industrial. We will wait for the city to tell us if that's the target or is it going to be increased or what is it so that we can help be in alignment with it. You already know about this one, so we have some land available, working with the new GBIC board of directors to work together with, what are we going to do in terms of investment in this area or do we just wait for a customer? We're hoping that this particular event that's coming on November 19th gives us some leads so that we can help this particular space. I've also presented this one before, that we, this particular 65 or so acres has been stagnant for over 10 years and we have some LOIs, people are interested in developing it. I think one of them, I think Lot 7 is the one that's probably further along, but we have others that are interested. Hopefully, we're able to fill that up sooner rather than later. And lastly, it's marketing and our image, the board also recommended that we rebrand GBIC and invest a little bit more in our marketing and help the overall Brownsville strategy. And we'll also work with BCIC and the City of Brownsville, make sure we're in alignment with the same narrative. And you'll see some of this in the budget presentation, how this reflects the budget. So as you can see in marketing, some of the things we've done is we're going to launch a new quarterly newsletter, relaunch a new website, we do industry spotlights here, in this particular case, we spotlighted Greyhound and what they're doing here locally, because I think a lot of people don't know what some of our industries are, and we're trying to create more awareness with students to let them know what is available for them in their own backyard. We also agreed through the board that we will create a dashboard, this is just, this is not real data, it's just to show you that we've created a dashboard and then with the board, we will measure everything that we just presented, from recruiting to expansion to workforce, to all these other things, and how are we performing? And based on this one, they will create a baseline, so then in year two, year three of TIP Strategies' recommendation, we'll be able to adjust after we collect this data through the board's direction.
Who's this going to be available to? Is this an internal document then?
It's an internal document, but definitely something we can make available in those meetings that you'll be participating in, Mayor, whether the city and BCIC are participating so that we can see. And then we can also come and present this to the commission as things develop, so we can see where things are moving and where things are not, so that we can adjust.
I think it would be good to get a quarterly report, some sort from you if possible.
And that's it. Basically, my intent here was to present to you what the board has adopted as the GBIC's strategic plan.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I would just like to voice, I'm concerned that you've done away with the internships previously when I was on the board, which is when you came along, GBIC was funding All In, which provided paid internships to college students and was of benefit to the employers, and now you've completely done away with that. It seems to make more sense that you should, you would offer that instead of eliminating it and then just add the component for high schoolers.
Yes, ma'am, I'm making a note of that. Actually, that particular grant was to United Way. United Way made a request to terminate it because they did not complete the performance of it last year, and this year, they asked for them not to be renewed. My understanding is that United Way contracted TSC and UTRGV, so both of them were going to do internships, neither of which were completed, and United Way asked that they not continue the program. So it wasn't GBIC's request, it was United Way's request.
Well, I know that they didn't seek for additional funding, I don't know that it's that they decided to dissolve the program.
I don't know, but we can look into it, yes, ma'am.
You may also want to look, coordinate with TSC, with Dr. Fleischman, who was in the meeting we had this past week. The TSC Foundation has allocated a large amount of money for workforce stipends, so you may want to coordinate with that, see if maybe you can grab some of that money, because it's really targeted to emerging or in need industry.
Yes, sir. Actually...
And their success rate is 100% right now.
Actually, the program that Commissioner Neris just referred to, TSC still has funding left because it wasn't a completed program, so I asked them to freeze it so that we can continue it, but now directly with TSC instead of through United Way.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have consent agenda items.
Do you have a motion?
It's a motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes.
Next, we have public hearings. Public hearing number one, public hearing in action on resolution number 2019-092 to rename McNair Family Drive from Palm Boulevard to San Pro Boulevard to East Fronton Street.
Honored members, commissioners, the slide before you is, can you, this next slide, can you show that, please? Resolution number 2009-19069 was approved on July 30th, which adopted a street naming policy. The City of Brownsville has received a petition to rename McNair Family Drive from East Fronton to Palm Boulevard, I mean, to rename East Fronton, to rename McNair Family Drive to East Fronton Street from Palm Boulevard to San Pro Boulevard. The applicant's reasons for the name change include historical importance of the original townstead street. The city did receive the application, has reviewed it for completeness, it is complete. No less than 75% of owners abutting the subject street are required to make the change. Based on the total of 78 property owners, this requires a minimum of 59 signatures. The applicant has submitted 61 signatures in favor of the street name change, which exceeds the minimum threshold of 75% of the property owners. Written notices of a public hearing were sent via certified mail to owners of real property along McNair Family Drive as per official at Valorem Tax Rule. The first public notice of a public hearing was posted in the Brownsville Herald on Sunday, October 27th, 2019, and the second public notice of a public hearing was posted in Brownsville Herald on Sunday, November 3rd, 2019. On the afternoon of Monday, November 4th, 2019, the city secretary's office received letter of support for maintaining the McNair Family Drive street name. So that's kind of a summary of what's happening.
Have you gone and have you verified signatures on this? Because I know that there's...
Yes, on the original application, we did, we did look at the signatures, they all had signatures.
The original application back in June?
No, the original application that was submitted for this, for this meeting.
Okay.
Mr. Hernandez is another group of citizens proposing to rename it to Fronton Street. On Monday, we received a petition from Mr. McNair with signatures in favor of maintaining McNair Drive. What's interesting on that is that some of the signatures on there, there's about six signatures on there that have, that are applicants who support it, on the application submitted by Mr. Hernandez, there are signatures that are supporting the name change to Fronton, and now they're signing in favor of McNair. So it's kind of a...
So we've noticed inconsistencies in that, that came to us yesterday through that city secretary's petition request. And so the question is, do we want to go ahead and verify, follow up, is staff amenable? And I think the attorney concurs that one way to review that and is to go back to those six or seven people that seem to have differing supports and just verify that as part of this process. And so staff is amenable to doing that, that is what the mayor and commission would like us to do.
I want to get this right, and from the very beginning, we haven't been able to get it right. I know that it was difficult the first time because there wasn't a policy in place and it was difficult for the commission because, you know, we relied on the employees, city employees, to kind of give us that representation that this is what they wanted, right? So I, if there's a discrepancy, I want to make sure that those people, that you speak to them personally and we figure out really where they are at. Because I noticed the first time, this happened before I was on the commission, so I noticed the second time around that there was some people that were on both.
Right.
So I don't know, that needs to be figured out.
Yes.
And then I know that there's an issue as far as how do you actually designate who's a property owner and the percentages, so I think we need to nail that down as well.
Yeah.
I want to do the right thing, I want to make sure that everything's done properly, though, because I don't want to do something and have somebody come back the next meeting with a different signature, a different story.
I would agree with, I would agree with everything our mayor just said. Another concern I have that I noticed is the way our policy was written is per house and not...
No, it's per property owner.
Per property owner, so I didn't understand if that was, if somebody owned three properties, do they get three votes?
No.
Or if somebody is renting and doesn't own a home in this area, do they, are they still entitled to a vote, although they may have lived there on that street for 20 years?
Well, that's another issue, because I don't know if you verified or whoever's in charge of verifying signatures, whether everybody that signed on there is the actual property owner and not a renter, just please look at that as well.
Yeah, we did go by the tax rule, as for the tax rule, we contacted the property owner. And as per legal interpretation of the document, of the policy, if you own 10 properties, you only get one, one signature.
The way the item was written, it says owners of properties abutting the street, so there may be 100 lots, but only 10 owners, well, we don't have, we only have 10 votes. And in looking at, into guidance on how to interpret that language, we were able to find a clear right on point where the statutory rules of construction regarding interpreting contracts are the ones that are to be applied here, and every single word in the Genesis documents to be given meaning. So when it says 75% of owners, that is exactly what we must apply, exactly what it says. So I understand there might be a situation where there's an owner with multiple lots because the policy is written, says owners of properties abutting the street and it's by owner, not by property. So I'm fairly confident that that would be correct, and that is my opinion and I've given some guidance into the department in that regard. I know that there's, you know, conflicting interests in regards to this issue and those on the other side of my opinion may not be happy with it, however, I'm fairly confident that that is a correct interpretation.
So I would agree, I think we have to be, do it right, and it has been a bit confusing, but other than, while you go back and verify all of that, which we already said, I would like to see some other options of how to honor or memorialize a particular family or business that has been very meaningful to the city, other than adjust a street name, because I'm wondering if there's other even bigger and better ways to do that as opposed to just argue about the name of the street.
Definitely, we can look into that. I believe parks may have some few, a few options, but we can, we can look into that further and rewrite options.
Okay.
My last question is Fronton, it's a very long street. So the renaming is only for a portion of it or is it for all of it?
From Palm, from Palm to San Pro.
Okay.
Yes, basically the eastern portion.
Since we're going around the table saying opinions, I realize that a lot of people here have been spending a lot of time coming to these meetings and getting together, getting everyone mobilized. For that reason, I would ask if any of the people, property owners whose names have been on both lists, maybe you're here and you could say which one your preference is, just so that we could move things along.
I understand that, but I don't know if we have all seven names and if they're all here, that can create an issue. I mean, if they're here, I don't have a problem, but...
And not only that, maybe some do not feel comfortable, standing up and stating that, I would say for their, you know...
We don't need those cars keyed.
Believe me, I want to do this as soon as possible, but I want to do it the right way, because my dad used to always say haste makes waste, I don't want to do this hastily, I don't want to do it sloppy, we've already done enough of that up to now, so I want to get it right.
I would make a motion to table.
I'll second that.
We have a motion to table and a second, any further discussion? Those in favor?
All right.
Those opposed?
Me.
Okay.
Thank you.
Was it, are we giveling, because it's a public comment.
Oh, I forgot. Yeah, sorry about that.
Hold on, this is not a public hearing, but everyone has an opportunity, everyone has an opportunity to comment.
Yeah, it is a public...
It's a public hearing.
Well, it is a public hearing, so I guess we could open it for public hearing if the commission's open.
You're right, you're right.
Yep.
So what do we do about that motion?
Do I withdraw my motion?
Withdraw, and I'll withdraw my second.
That's fine, but just for the residents that are out there, you guys want to talk today, not a problem, but we're very likely going to end up tabling it. If you want to talk, this meeting, next meeting, whatever, but you're here, so you want to do it? Yeah, let's go.
Renee, do I need to remove my...
I think that would be appropriate.
I would withdraw my motion.
Okay.
I'll withdraw my second.
All right.
I'll withdraw my vote.
Please state your name.
Yeah, hello, my name is Juan René Hernández and I'm a property owner of 430 East Fronton Street. So basically, I'm here as a property owner and the voice of other property owners of East Fronton Street who are present and those who couldn't attend, whereas as taxpayers, property owners, we come before you to request that our historical street be changed back to its original name. We're not here to question your guidelines or city policies to change or rename streets within the city boundaries, but rather, we are here because we have met all the requirements requested. You guys set up the requirements, 75%, we got all of that. So now you're, I mean, we're being told that, I mean, the only thing in question is those six residents, but even then, we still got more than 75% of the people, of the residents in favor of the name change.
The issue is going to be those seven, those seven, if they're on the other side as was done on Monday, then they knock off your 75%. That's why I want to get this right, but continue.
And, yeah, so we strongly believe that you, the City of Brownsville or the city commission had more information on hand or had done the proper due diligence back in June, the change, or in May, the change would never have happened. So upon learning of the decision, we requested the reversal of the decision on August 6th, on August 6th, 2019, the decision to change the name back to East Fronton Street was denied. We were told to follow the new guidelines established on the same date of August 6th to get our street name back, which we have. We've met all the requirements, like I just mentioned, imposed to us by the new guidelines. We have 77% of the property owners in favor of the name change out of the 75% required. So what the process we did is we first sent, went to order to order each property on East Fronton Street, we visited the owners who lived in different parts of town, a mail out was done for owners who lived in different cities or even countries. In August 19, we sent out a second mail out, but this time, we sent it out a certified mail with the petition to request signature in support of changing the name back to East Fronton Street. On August 19th, we sent a third mail out as well certified. So, I mean, at the end, we were able to get the 50 signatures exceeding the 48 threshold or for the 75, 75% required by the city. We also mailed out a certified letter to the Brownsville Historical Association, asking for their support, as it is a historical city or a city that's been here for 169 years, almost 170, but unfortunately, they failed to respond, so we conclude they don't support our cause. So we're just here for the residents, commercial and property owners of East Fronton Street. East Fronton Street means pride, their neighborhood, their home, some have lived on East Fronton for generations and will continue to do so. The fact that 77% of the current property owners want the name of their street, East Fronton, back, and then just the historical importance of the street, like I mentioned, East Fronton Street predates Brownsville, when a river ford located in Ramireño was used by locals to cross the Rio Grande River to travel to Point Isabel, which was originally named El Fronton de Santa Isabel, so I believe that's where we get the name Fronton, or Fronton for short, which was used as a summer resort. And the street has played an important role since the 1900s for the development and growth of the City of Brownsville. It was an industrial warehouse district from 1900s to the 1990s. Part of the Afro-American and Afro-Mexican community lived there during the 1800s up to the 1970s. East Fronton Street history was used to designate the freight depot and warehouse district in the City of Brownsville, so like the new district that was just recently named or we got awarded national recognition, I believe, or state recognition. East Fronton is part of it, so it's kind of odd to rename a street that's been here for a while to a family who's been here a while too, I guess, but not as long as the City of Brownsville. So and then just basically the will and desire of the current property owners and residents for the sentimental value and memories of past, present and future generations that have called the street home, for the preservation of the history of the City of Brownsville. And I believe East Fronton Street is protected by ordinance 2015-1606, which replaced the old ordinance adopted by the city in 1971. The new ordinance's objective is to, the historic preservation of the City of Brownsville and Fronton Street falls within its statement of purpose, section one, section being to strengthen the economy of the city, to strengthen the civic pride through neighborhood preservation and to promote the use of historic resources for culture, prosperity, education, enjoyment and the general welfare of the people and of the city, visitors of Brownsville. And then this last fact can be found in the City of Brownsville website. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for doing the job of coordinating everyone.
Thank you.
Yeah, you've done a good job on that. Thanks.
I've been coming to these meetings for twelve years. This is not the first time I've seen this issue.
Please state your name for the record.
Brad Burks, Brownsville. It's not the first time I've seen this issue. When the idea of renaming a street first comes up, everybody's excited about, the ones that are pushing it are excited about who they're going to honor. Every time, they are surprised that there's a huge backlash against it. But think about what happens when you rename somebody's street. It's like you're coming into their house and changing their life without their permission. So it's different than changing the name of a park. It's different than, than naming something in the first place. So the anger that comes against the, the renaming, basically is, it's dishonoring the person that you intended to honor in the first place. We're, we're a growing city. There's going to be new streets that we can honor people with. I know a lot of the names are, are name, none of the streets are named by the developers. Some, maybe someone could suggest names to those developers when that's happening. But when you rename a street, it adds confusion. Everyone on that street, now, their life has been changed. I still get mail from the people that lived in the house I'm in twenty years ago. I mean, confusion happens. The post office does their best, but not all the mail gets forward. We heard about problems with ambulances getting somewhere. Now, when you're talking about a street like Mr. Bailey's, where there's only one house, that's a different situation. But you, you look at the situation with Coffee Port Drive. I was here when they did that.
I was going to mention that a little while ago. That was a very, a very similar situation that occurred in District Two. It was before my time, and the ultimate resolution was half is Coffee Port, because half of it was named after somebody named Coffee, who had passed away, but his family still exists. So it was half Jaime Zapata, half Coffee Port.
So confusion. We just, we just made it, we made it very confusing.
Coffee, Coffee Port, Jaime Zapata.
Yes.
The Coffee family donated that land for the road to the port, as I understand it. And they did not do their due diligence to find that out before they decided to rename the street.
Nobody assumed it was, there was a person named Coffee.
You have, I, I'm sure there's, obviously Jaime Zapata's someone that we should honor.
Absolutely.
But let, let's give him a whole street somewhere when we have a new street. You look at Dr. Hugh Emerson Drive. So if you're going to give someone directions into Brownsville to Dr. Hugh Emerson Drive, it goes like this. You're coming south on the expressway, exit Alton Glor, take a left, and you come to Pareta Slime Boulevard, where the, the street will change names to Dr. Hugh Emerson Drive, which used to be El Hardin Drive. I mean, you've got that whole explanation to get them where it was. And so every time we do this, we're, we're adding confusion, we're giving people a reason to be upset, and dishonor the person that you really want to honor in the first place. And so that, that's my little take on it. And so I, I would suggest we make it very difficult to rename a street. When you're talking about new streets, yeah, let, let's honor these people with new streets, when that happens. But anyway.
Thank you.
Thank you. Completely off topic, God bless you, completely off topic, in our policy naming, policy, our street naming policy, is there something that would cover families like the gentleman who spoke, the Bailey family, where they live on a street that's duplicated? Because we have a lot of area in our ETJ, and let's say that we annex, like we did into Omito, and there are two streets that have that name. In our street naming policy, is there something that would protect? Because if not, we would need to add it.
Well, the street naming policy is routed to the, when there's a petition for a proposal, it is routed to different agencies. For example, the fire department, the police department had a concern with duplication of, of names. Then that would, when that, when that technical analysis is done by each department, that would come out in that request. So we do have a process incorporating an existing policy.
Just slip through on that one.
Thanks. Yes, sir. Please tell us your name.
Ernesto Hernandez Chapain. I'm a, I'm a property owner at four thirty East Fronton Street. And I've been, I've been asked by this, by the property owners of Fronton Street to spearhead the application, to rename our street back to East Fronton Street. I'm not here, I'm not, this is not my, my argument is not about renaming, but the way the procedure is following, because like Mr. Lastra said, he wasn't able to confirm, he had plenty of time to confirm the names of the signatures, because the phone numbers, and their mobile phone numbers are on the petition that we submitted with our application. So we had, what, two weeks, three weeks, we met with Mr. Lastra, and he didn't bring this up. And again, and again, we were, we were fulfilling the requirements for an application to bring this matter to your vote, okay? So therefore, if, if there was something wrong, they should have, they should have approved or verified the signatures before they even brought it to you, before they even brought it before you. So why are we bringing it back again, okay, when they had plenty of time to do that, okay? Now, if Mr. McNair wants to rebuttal or argue about your policies, like he did in the newspaper today, then I think he should file an application and pay five hundred dollars like we did, in order for him to come and submit his argument before you. Therefore, again, he kept my, you kept my original file. We could have, we could have verified those signatures before we came here today. So, you know, I'm just questioning, I'm just questioning your procedure and the way you do the procedures, because, because, because we went through this plenty of times. You asked me to, they asked us to verify certain signatures on that, on the, on that application, four, five, or six, or seven. They asked us to provide documentation and proof of, on proof of signatures and ownerships of the properties. And then, and then again, we have this, we would have this argument again. So, okay, so what's?
Mayor, if I may address that question?
What the deal is.
If I may address that question, the problem is, and now, with, with respect to the hard work that has been put in by the engineering department, seven of the signatures in your petition to, to change the name are now also on the petition to keep the name.
Another petition. That's what I'm understanding, right?
Correct. So, in, in.
It's a different petition.
I understand. But in order to give the true consent of the people, because we could just, the city could have taken a stance where they would just reject your petition based on the change of heart or revocation by those subsequent signatures. However, the city has not done that. The city wants to make sure that we get those signatories' true intent, to make sure that, as the mayor says, that we do this right. And, and I think the city is just trying to do the right thing.
That's been the whole issue, is the process, and I agree with you on that. I'm trying to get this right. And I don't want, I don't want to have to come back here.
Yeah, we've been trying to get this right also, and we did everything that you asked for. And, and we sent not only one mail out, but two mail outs, and two were certified. There was plenty of time. Now all of a sudden, we get signatures, and we don't know who they are, but we're, we're more than happy to go back and find out what happened. Okay, people are, they have the right to change their mind, but we, we have to find out what happened. We don't know who they are.
I agree with you, sir.
We, we, we just want, we should have, we should have had at least the, the courtesy of him, of the city telling us that this was going on, so we can verify, so we can bring it up when.
I don't disagree with you, sir. Thanks, thanks for coming up.
Thank you.
Thanks.
May I ask a question to the city attorney? The policy, does it provide for a, for a counter to a petition to change the street name?
It does not, and it was not counted as a petition, Commissioner. What we were concerned with was the fact that the signatures attached to it could be considered a revocation of the prior signatures, which would create a problem with the count on the original petition. So we were just trying to do our due diligence, just to make sure that those seven signatures that may or may not be in question, that their true intent is followed.
So those duplicate signatures, though, those are in the petition for the name change back in May? Or is it a more recent petition to, to keep the name as McNair Family Drive?
Those signatures were turned in to the city yesterday at four o'clock.
Under, and, and what's the title of that list?
It was a petition to keep the name, because there's no procedure for anyone to file such a petition. That petition was not considered as a petition to keep the name. What we were concerned with was the signatures that were attached. Make sure that those signatures were not a revocation of those signatures in the original petition.
But my concern is that if the city policy doesn't provide for a counter to, a petition to maintain the current, the existing name, then we really can't even consider that.
Well, the problem is not that simple, Commissioner, because one of the issues that we had was that those signatures, at least a few, a few of them, did not match. So there could be an element of fraud. So we, again, we just want to certify.
There's no procedure to, to submit the rebuttal of the other signatures, which were already verified. They wouldn't be coming before the commission if they hadn't been verified. And there's no procedure to rebut it. And, and you all have allowed this so-called petition to come in to rebut the properly executed petition of these citizens.
Commissioner, our concern was the signatures weren't matching. So there may have been an element of fraud. We just want to make sure that we do the right thing. Now, you all don't have to follow that road. If you all choose not to table, and believe in the process that's, it's been done today, you have the last voice and the last, the last say in this matter. If you choose not to table and go forward with the petition, that's one of your options.
And counsel, just to verify, the signatures are not, they don't match, right?
There's some signatures that do not match, which was what brought our concern.
You mean that they don't match in the way they're written, or they don't match on each, each of the petitions?
I mean, we have the name of the property owner and two completely inconsistent signatures. So we don't know which could be the right one.
So also, it's important to note.
Okay, but we have already one petition that's verified, and those signatures are verified.
It is. The, the city has determined that that's a bio petition. That's why it's here before you all.
So these non-complying signatures are the ones that are different than the ones on the verified petition, shouldn't be considered?
Well, we don't know which one the, which one is the true and correct one.
With the one that they verified.
Well, they've been verified that that is the owner of the property, and the signature is the only one that we had on, on base. Now, they did check with other databases to see if those signatures were correct, Commissioner. They have properly verified that petition. One of your choices today here is not to table the item and move forward with the vote.
So if the signatures don't match, then that means one of them would have been forged.
Could be, yes.
Right.
Or like the husband signed for the wife, and the wife doesn't know.
Or it could be done under authority, which is something they want to verify.
I think it's important also to look at it this way. If there are two conflicting signatures, the commission would be obligated to void the signature altogether, no?
Well, that would be the easy route, and just knock those seven signatures, signatures out. But then that would also knock out all the hard work.
And that's why it's important to verify, so we don't knock out your petition.
To make sure that we're doing the right thing.
Can I speak?
Yes, sir. Come on up. Just tell us your name, please. You've got three minutes.
All I need is one.
All right.
I'm Matthew Ivan Castaneda, son of Felipe with Clava Castaneda. He was a Vietnam veteran. My mother was a nurse and a teacher. They did charity work. They helped with the community a lot. I want to do the same. I recognize faces up here. You guys are doing an amazing job. I'm one of the signatures that signed for both. Ask me why. McNair's my neighbor. He came up to him one day very mad. What do you think I'm going to do when a millionaire comes up to me, a property owner? I'm scared. I'm shaky. I'm against the name change. I love the name Fronton. If you want something else, you can have it. McNair's actually my friend. I'm real, you know, he called me on the phone. Hey, is everything good? Yes, yes. Thank you, McNair, for caring about us citizens. So I'm not opposed to naming something else, McNair. That'd be amazing. But let's keep Fronton. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you for having the courage to come up.
That was less than a minute, by the way.
I'll take it. Good evening. My name is Bill Berg. I live on West Saint Charles Street now. And one of my fears is that at some point in the not-too-distant future, somebody will want to name it West Saint Trump Street, and everything will change.
That'll never happen.
I do want to answer.
Don't give anybody any ideas, Bill.
Yeah, don't bring that before us.
What Reverend Berg brought up earlier, and, and was discussed earlier by Commissioner Tetra, about renaming streets creates tremendous disruption. And there aren't that many streets in Brownsville. I lived in a town, not a city, it was a city, where during Vietnam War, where everybody wanted to rename something. And what they named in that town, actually they had been doing it since World War One, fallen heroes got intersections named after them, did not change any street names under the sign that said, Second Street this, this way, and First Avenue that way. There was another street which said McCormick Square, or something like that. Perhaps we could take the corner of East Fronton and Sixth, and name it McNair Square. That's all. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Commissioner, Michelle Sanchez, here in opposition to the petition to change the name. I'm going to bring up something that I think hasn't been brought up, but it's the methodology that's been used to count the votes, so to speak. The petitioners' application is based on ownership. So you get one property that has two owners, or maybe there's six owners, because the parents died and left six children. So they would get six votes, or two votes, husband and wife. If it's on the tax roll, and the wife's name only, it's one owner. You get one owner that has thirty lots.
Yeah, Michelle, just, when you're going to talk, just get behind the mic so we can pick it up, please.
Thank you. But you're asking us to reinterpret the policy or change the way it is. You have to play by the rules. The rules have been set. You need to play by the rules.
All I'm saying is, okay, if you Google "street renaming policy," the third, the third entry on Google is the, the city of Greenville, Texas, Greenville, Texas, which is north of Dallas. And our ordinance is, our policy is verbatim copied from the city of Greenville. They did change the name council to commission. You call the city secretary of Greenville, and ask her how they count the votes. Well, it's one lot per vote, one vote per lot. Very, I mean, no question asked. And you can verify the number of lots from the CAD. Second method is to go by the number CAD accounts, which you can also verify on the CAD. You've got, and, and she, with the numbers, spells it out. Under the number of lots, there's a hundred and thirty-nine lots. Under the CAD account method, there's eighty-six. Under the petitioners' method, with owners, there's eighty to eighty-two. So the percentages change, when you're taking seventy-five percent of different numbers. The only one that works for the petitioners is using owners, all right? So they've counted one owner owning thirty lots is one vote, and two owners owning one lot is two votes. Now that, I mean, it should be one lot per vote, or one vote per lot. That's, that's the number of lots affected by the change, and that's how the percentage should be applied. So it's my contention that the policy is apparently vague, since it's being interpreted to count owners only, as opposed to lots or CAD account numbers. Ownership.
Michelle, you have a time, but I'm going to give you a little bit more because of...
Okay, ownership of a lot can only really be determined by a title search.
Okay, this is a question of the policy, though. That's not what, how the agenda item is written.
I understand.
Given the law, given the policy that was adopted, we're supposed to decide on that. You're asking us to, to address a completely different issue.
I'm asking you to interpret the policy, because there's different ways of counting the votes.
You're asking us to change the, the policy.
Really, what it's going to come down to is interpretation of the policy and how that works. That's the, that's the key question.
And that's a policy decision that the commissioners need to make, because it's our contention that the votes are not being counted justly. You're disenfranchising the majority of the lot owners.
And that's something that, counsel, you're going to have to give us an opinion on that.
Well, he did.
Mayor, I think I have. I think I have. It's clear. Like, like Ms. Sanchez is saying, the only way this works for all these people is if we count owners. But that's exactly what's written in the policy. It's seventy-five percent of owners of properties abutting the street. I mean, that's exactly what it says. That is my best opinion.
We just have to, you know, strictly construe the, the policy as written. We just have to, you know, strictly construe the, the policy as written, and if you have case on that, just, I'll be happy to. Just get it to us. That's all.
Said he had a case, and it's construction rules. And the construction rules give each word their meaning. And the meaning, as he interpreted and gave his legal opinion, is owners, not lot.
But, but you see what problems you're having trying to determine who the owners are.
Well, I, and I don't see the-
And that's not a static issue.
The ordinance that you're referring to from Greenville or wherever, I don't see it here to be able to compare and make sure it's, it's the same thing.
You don't need to see it. Look at your own ordinance. It's identical.
Well, I like, well, how do we know it's identical? That's what I'm pointing at.
Okay, well, city staff can verify it. I mean, I don't even know who drafted, quote, drafted the ordinance. And I, I'm not, I mean-
I would think city attorney.
Copying another ordinance that works is not a problem. It's just, it's, it's just when you call that city and say, "How do you apply it?" And they say, "We go by one lot per, one vote per lot."
That's their interpretation, I guess.
And that's their interpretation. And, and I'm just saying, we don't, we're seen to be focused on ownership and the numbers of owners, and if they are the true owners or not the true owners, and if there's a husband or a wife that signed or didn't sign, and you would avoid a lot of that if you just went strictly by lot count or CAD account uh, numbers.
I understand. Thanks.
I, I would say that the staff did look at the Cameron County Appraisal District, so the property owners were determined through them.
Yeah. I mean, that's the title owner of the property. I get it.
No.
If a corporation owns a lot, is it everybody in the corporation that gets a vote?
So you're saying CAD is not, doesn't reflect the title owner?
I'm saying the least reliable information on CAD is the ownership, because ownership is not static. They certify their roles on July fifteenth of each year to the taxing agencies. And they set the ownership on that date. So anything that happens after July to December thirty-first is not reflected on CAD. CAD also doesn't reflect if somebody has died and left six kids that now own the lot.
I understand. So-
So it's the least reliable information you can get on CAD.
It's, it's not up to date, is what you're saying? It's not up to date?
It's not, it's just not reliable. It's not a title search. They just, they just go with the CLDs and, and they don't, they don't know if there's a probate, if there's a, a death, uh-
Counsel, how, uh, how up to date is the data? How up to date is, is the, um, the search done by the city as far as to determine ownership? Do we know that?
There's two methods, it looks like.
The way that it was written in the policy, it says owners as determined by CAD. Uh, so that's what we did. So, I mean, that is exactly how the policy was written. It was not written by myself. It was written by the department. I was called on to interpret what the language meant, and I think I did my best opinion. I understand and disagree with that. We've had a conversation about this, and I gave you case law that you thought was confusing, but that is the best, uh, uh, the best resource that I could have on something that is right on point. Thank you.
If you're trying, if you're, if you're trying to cut down on the number of street, of street name request, change, name change requests, it seems like you want to increase the level, the bar, and make it harder, not easier.
Right.
So seventy-five is a pretty high bar. Uh, the highest we saw, I'm looking at, at the various statutes around the country, was ninety. The lowest was fifty. But if you're going to take seventy-five percent of owners-
Conversation to take place. It's off of the agenda. I'm gonna be the party tarian else.
Well, but also, when you're engaging them as well, that kind of cuts into their time. They have to respond to stuff you're saying, too, so it works both ways.
I'm, I'm just trying to cut to the, to the methodology.
I get you. Thanks, Michelle.
This is what I'm trying to get to. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hold on. You don't talk from the audience. If you're gonna talk, you come up here. But you already spoke. You're out of time. So, sorry. Who else? Absolutely. Come on up. Tell us your name, please.
Ernesto Hernandez, Jr. Okay, um, well, I don't know what my father wants to say, but, um, I'm not as good at public speaking as you are, right? But, um, what I want to say is, last time we came here, we weren't able to change the name because there was a policy in place already, right? Your attorney, right now, is saying that, uh, well, the attorney of the city and not your, um, is telling us that, let me put it into words. Last time they told us that we couldn't change the name because there was already a policy in place. He already suggested the way it was interpreted right now, presently, and we followed your procedure. Someone else is trying to convince the council to interpret it a different way, so that's, that should be on a different agenda. We're following the interpretations that your attorney cost suggested, you know? So according to that interpretation, we've met all the requirements. Now the question is, can we verify those signatures? Now, my question is, you announced a public hearing. Where are those people to come in here and make their comment that they're opposing the name change? We got all these people that are in favor of the name change back to Fronton Street. You know, it's just, there's a lot of inconsistencies, inconsistencies here, and only seems like the only people that are taken advantage of are the residents of Fronton Street. That's just my comment. Okay?
Thank you. Anybody else? Is that all? Okay.
Motion to close public hearing?
A motion to close. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now, a motion?
Motion to table.
We have a motion to table. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Uh, any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Neat.
Okay.
Um, if I can just add one more comment. All of us, I think, have already made up our mind. It's just a matter of the procedure. They want to do it, um, make sure that there, we don't open ourselves up to liability. But I think all of us on, at this table have made up our mind.
I agree with that.
It's not that it's gonna change. So I, I kind of, that's why I feel your frustration that it's taking even longer, because-
I, I feel it, too.
And we can't ignore that six people, you know, are voting both ways. We need to determine what their true intent is, and I would say that you should not be intimidated by anyone. Yes. No one should be able to intimidate you, and you should determine if there's been some forgery of your name, uh, as well. I would encourage you to do that, and don't be intimidated about what you really want to do.
Exactly. All right, so-
And thank you for coming. Absolutely.
So thanks. Um, it's, the hearing or the action is tabled. Next item?
Public hearing number two. Public hearing and action on first reading on ordinance number twenty nineteen dash ninety-three dash PP to amend Article Four, Classification Plan Section eleven dash seventy-one A, classes and positions of the quota ordinances of the city of Brownsville, Texas by establishing new classes, positions, and number of employees in the fire and police departments.
Good evening, honor of mayor, city commissioners. The Brownsville Fire Department is requesting approval to amend ordinance twenty nineteen nine thirty-three double PP. The changes will reflect the increase in number of firefighters from one hundred seven to one hundred twenty-two in order to hire the firefighter positions awarded through the SAFER grant. The approval will assist in bringing much-needed personnel, helping alleviate current overtime costs, reducing burnout amongst firefighters, and providing for continued safe manning of fire apparatus for our firefighters and our citizens. Leadership is committed to ensure that the fifteen new firefighter positions are sustained past the three years of the grant.
Is that it?
That's it.
Okay. My, um, is there anybody else on this item? Okay. Um, I had an issue. So you're asking us to, to go ahead and con, and continue the same amount going forward after the grant's over, right?
That's correct.
Is that something that's required by the grant itself?
It is not required by the grant, no.
Okay. Do we know what the fiscal impact's gonna be on that, uh, past year three? I mean, I understand what you're saying. I just, number one, I don't, it's not required, so I'm not sure if it's necessary for us to do that now. And then, I don't know if we have, because what we're gonna do is we're basically committing to the same number past year three, and, um, I just don't know what that's gonna cost us. I have no clue. So I'm assuming somebody from the city has that information, and I'm hesitant to commit ourselves past year three if we don't have to.
How much, um, how much was the grant for? Do we know?
It, um, I don't have the, the current number.
I think it was one point some, one point two.
One point, one point one, one point two million.
One million, one million, one hundred and thirty-six thousand, eight hundred and six and fifty cents.
A year, or?
No, that's over the course of three years.
Over three years.
Okay, so basically, it's probably gonna cost us-
Three fifty, four hundred, maybe.
Divided by three.
And then if you do CBA and other stuff in there, aggregate that going forward.
Plus overtime.
Right. So we're looking at initial three, uh, four to five hundred probably per year ballpark.
Correct.
Helen, has staff looked at the cost, and are, is, are, is management recommending this?
I didn't see any recommendation in the packet.
There is no.
Oh, actually, there was. Yes, there was.
Yes, we're working together with the fire department and, and reaching out to resources through ICMA to develop a staffing model, and we'll be presenting that.
Okay. My question is, why are we doing this three years ahead of time?
Three years ahead of time?
Yeah. This is commitment past year three. So we have a grant for three years.
Yes.
We have an initial fifteen firefighters every year for three years under a grant.
That's correct.
What this is asking is that we continue to have those fifteen onboard, which I don't have necessarily a problem with, but I just don't know why we're doing it now, three years ahead. I don't see the purpose.
The, the reason we're asking for the increase in, in staffing is that we cannot preemptively hire those fifteen without the change in ordinance.
And then fire-
Okay, that's why I was asking if it was required.
Correct. So the, the ordinance, we can't hire past the ordinance number. So preemptively, we cannot hire those fifteen firefighters up until the ordinance is increased to meet those new fifteen firefighter positions.
So you were able to go out, get the grant, without the ordinance being in place?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Because also, I guess, people would retire and-
Well, what is a, what is a request for the ordinance, though? Because the way I understood it is, we're committing to continuing to employ these past year three. That's, that's why I'm wondering why we're here. But if you're saying it's required for the grant, that's a different story. I didn't see that in the packet, and I asked you earlier, and you said no.
Right. It's, it's not required by the grant. It's required for the hiring process by the ordinance. So that's why we're requesting an amendment of the ordinance to increase the number of staffing from one hundred seven firefighters to one hundred twenty-two. That would allow the hiring of the fifteen firefighters as per the grant.
And civil service does require it.
Requires that we have the exact amount.
To identify the number of, of positions available.
We can't-
Says to currently hire.
Right. So we cannot hire without those positions actually being available by civil service.
We're going from how many to how many?
From one hundred seven by, to one hundred twenty-two firefighter positions.
Okay.
So it's just a fifteen. It's a fifteen.
Correct.
What if you need, what if you decide you need more? We have to change it again?
That, yes, that's been done before. If we, through a staffing model, determine we need more firefighters, then that would go to the commission and, and ordinance change once again.
So why don't we just overshoot?
If we needed less, we would also amend it to, to reduce that amount.
How often does this occur? I mean, my inclination is to overshoot. Instead of one twenty-two, we go to one thirty or something. Then we don't have to come back.
If we overshoot, as per civil service, we have to hire the allotted positions. So we cannot have vacant positions.
Civil service then requires for you to have the exact amount of positions?
Correct.
Wow, okay.
Is this a public hearing?
Yes, it is. Do we have anybody else hearing this?
Motion to close public hearing?
Second.
Are you good?
We have a motion and a second. Uh, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Do I have any motions?
Motion approved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you. Motion passed. Thanks.
Next, we have items for individual consideration. Action item number three, consideration action to approve the Greater Brownsville Incentives Corporation Budget Fiscal Year Twenty Twenty budget.
Mayor, city commission, I believe you have some material in front of you regarding this item. This particular budget was, uh, approved by the JIBIC board on seventeen October, which is the last JIBIC board meeting. I'll also mention that prior to that particular meeting, we had several, uh, work sessions to discuss the whole budget, and it was finally approved on that particular date. What I'm gonna do is I'm going to go over, um, nine different items, or nine different areas of the budget, starting with personnel and services. The personnel services budget did not change from prior budget. Um, a lot of it has to do with three different, three different positions, three different vacancies that haven't been filled, uh, since I've been here. And, uh, so, uh, need approval from the, from the board to move forward. However, um, it reflects three positions that are not filled.
Three?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Um, you have five now? You have five employees now?
We have four.
Okay.
I'm sorry. Yes, five.
Okay. And you've got two that are vacant, right?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I understood. Because right here, on most of your stuff, it says personnel of seven.
What it is, is, uh, we, we went from eight to seven.
Okay.
So I, I guess my point was that it's, it's, uh, this particular budget didn't change from the year before, and then we saved that money. So that money's still in, in the JIBIC budget, and the board requested that. We still have it manned for eight, however, only budget for those seven, as you, as you pointed out. Materials and supplies, this particular one, this particular one did not change either. There was, um, I think I went, okay, yeah. Did not change either. Um, and also, not all of this budget was used last year. The majority of it, over fifty percent of it, reflects furniture that is not owned by JIBIC in the Young House. So there's a lot of furniture in there that's, doesn't belong to JIBIC. So this particular budget item has been as such in the event that in the future, there's some move or something, and there's a requirement to buy furniture.
Okay, I was wondering, because you had quite a, a pretty high amount for furniture.
But again, uh, my understanding has never been used completely. It's just the fact that most of the furniture in the Young House does not belong to JIBIC.
So when we acquired the Young House, UTRGV had been leasing it, and they took everything. So the city let us go to the warehouse and pick. We have a surplus warehouse, so most of the furniture in there belongs to the city, and sometimes they put, excuse me, they auction it. So at any given time, the city could go and pull. It's like-
That sounds reasonable.
Yeah, I don't know that we would do that, and take away, uh, JIBIC, our economic development A partner.
Appreciate that.
Yeah, it's older stuff, and- Trust that we wouldn't do that to you. Yeah, don't take their furniture. But it's older stuff that has, some of it has surpassed its lifetime.
Yeah, I think the understanding with this item is that it's typically not spent.
Yeah.
It's just budgeted.
Okay.
Just in case.
Right. Uh, maintenance of the building, this particular item was increased, was increased, and, and the recommendation of the board was to, uh, I don't know if you've been to the Young House lately, Mayor, Commission, but there's some parts that are not up to standard. So we added a little bit more money into this particular line item so that we can maintain the historical house of Young House to standard.
Under the contract, who has the responsibility to maintain?
We do have a service agreement with the city of Brownsville. They do maintain the grounds, for example, and the like, but not necessarily-
The structure is your-
Some structure itself or something. So they do help-
Seven forty-one?
They do help with some major items. This would be for firearms, like the rails. Some of them are rotting in the bottom. So we, the board agreed to up this particular line item, line item, just in case we need some budget for it. And again, it's not necessarily meaning that we will spend it. It's just there in case we need to work with the city to, uh, make the right, uh, repairs.
Well, uh, does BCIC, because they're co-tenants, so do they kind of help with this as well?
Yes, sir. Typically, on common areas like this, we share costs with, with BCIC.
So are we questioning, are you, are you finished with your presentation?
With that, with, no, sir. Uh, I'm not finished with the presentation. The next item is miscellaneous services. Uh, you can see I'm listed, listed there on your document. Uh, this particular one, uh, was added. Some funds were added. The board agreed that, uh, we should engage with some membership dues with some areas. For example, the governor's economic development office recommends that we be part of the Go Big in Texas, um, membership, and the board agreed to up the membership a little bit higher than we typically have. So this, this particular line item reflects, most of it is, uh, around membership dues.
How many workshops did you have with the board on the budget? How many workshops did you have with the board?
We had, we had one official, uh, workshop, but we had several, um, exchanges of material in between.
Do you have a budget committee?
We, we do not have a budget committee. We opted, or the board opted, to have a workshop and have the workshop make the recommendations, and then the recommendations were made, were made on a regular JIBIC board meeting. Okay, uh, this particular professional services, uh, this, this is where the JIBIC attorney, uh, monies come from. That's not inclusive of all of it. That's just budgeted in case there's other professional services required throughout the year. Typically, this particular line item is not spent completely also. Uh, usually, it's just the JIBIC attorney's fees, and a JIBIC attorney was hired on one October.
How much was that budget item last year? How much was expended on that line item?
I believe just the ninety. Just the, uh, just the JIBIC attorney's fees were spent last year.
So you spent ninety thousand last year? I thought you just said that.
Yes, sir.
Wasn't, he paid five thousand dollars a month. That's sixty thousand, no?
Uh, I, I'm not sure, there was some transition in between, in between a couple of attorneys, looking at Mr. Decosse, but my understanding is that this particular nine item, only the GIBIC attorney's fees were spent. So, there's no change.
So, do you, do you hire, do you ever use, uh, for, uh, legal services besides whoever's your attorney of record?
Uh, during, during my time, we have not, but understand that prior attorney, Mr. Luis Hernandez did. Uh, there was an attorney in San Antonio, I don't know that attorney, I've seen, I've seen some data on the prior expenditures. So, but, uh, so, transferred question, yes, there has been a time where, where, uh, a different attorney was hired.
And the new attorney that was hired, um, do they have a set fee per month?
Five thousand, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
You, did you mention that the city of Brownsville did the, the lawn and the maintenance, or the, the landscape stuff?
We, we call them whenever we need some, some major work within the area, uh, but we have them looking at Jenny. We do have a contract with a contractor that comes by, uh, every other week.
So, that's what the eighty-four hundred is? Um, and how do you, um, what do you contemplate? You, you have here professional, or travel for professional development, fifteen thousand, I guess, in dues and stuff, and then board profession, that's seven seventy and seven seventy dash zero one. So, then over on seven sixty-seven and seven sixty-seven zero one, you have eighty thousand for staff travel. And then twenty thousand for board travel. So, I mean, I know one's education, but what are you contemplating spending eighty thousand on tour?
Trying to find it on here.
Your staff.
Slide item seven six seven.
I mean, do you have some trips planned?
Right, uh, good question, yes, sir. So, again, I, I mentioned earlier, when, when I presented earlier around, uh, the, the, um, tip strategies, recommendations on a strategic plan, that GIBIC being so new, and BDC used to typically, uh, manage the recruiting part of economic development, so they would travel and try to recruit companies into Brownsville. That hasn't happened. So, in the prior, in the prior year, uh, we haven't really traveled to recruit, we haven't gone to missions and things like that.
Were they successful in, in doing that, in bringing any companies down when they did that?
My understanding is there were some, yes.
Any from Columbia?
Well, wait, but, come on, let's stick to the agenda.
I'm talking about the budget and what, and how...
But this is future forecasting.
Well, my opinion on this is, is that the, the staff travel was really high, but I'm expecting your board to kind of be very vigilant of the expenses on that. That, that's one of the reasons I'm, I'm looking at this, and I, I know your board looked through it, and I know that they went through workshops, and they ultimately approved it, I'm sure that there was some changes.
Yes, sir.
But I think this is pretty high, but I'm expecting that there's gonna be some sort of return on any, any sort of travel that's done. I'm sure your board's gonna keep an eye on it.
Yes, sir, again, this is, this will be part of that dashboard that we showed you. That's one, one of the several items that we report would be this part, uh, the recruiting part. And the dashboard will show us, uh, to Mr. Niss's point is, was it effective or not? Effective or not, so then we would change that particular strategy.
And so, maybe as a courtesy, GIBIC could also follow the city procedures on travel. Um, I know that GIBIC and PUB and all of these boards, you know, they can stay in a five-star hotel if they want, but the city has certain per diem caps. Maybe just as a courtesy, that GIBIC could follow the same, um, procedures.
Yes, ma'am.
I never traveled on GIBIC, but I understood if I wanted to, I could have.
Yes.
We can provide that to GIBIC.
And BCIC, and maybe everybody else, just to kind of cut costs down and make sure they understand that this is tax, uh, sales tax.
Right.
Yes, ma'am.
And again, that's, I think this is what you were alluding to, the landscaping and maintenance item. Committed incentives, these are incentives that have been committed for years, most of them. You see capital M fellows, you see CK, you see SATA, for example. You can see what commit, the commitments are for this particular fiscal year, for this particular budget, and then the con, the, the balance of that particular contract, as you can see the numbers there. And so, this next one is non-incentives projects, and you know, you know, most of them, the city of Brownsville's, um, airport renovations, um, and then also the city of Brownsville's airport new terminal, those dollars amounts and the, and the commitment going forward. And also VIDA, VIDA is a, is a nonprofit that the board agreed during last board meeting to continue funding. And those are the non-in, non-incentive projects, uh, pending. Overall, you see the breakdown of the budget, forty-two percent are committed in seven of projects, and you can see the percentage breakdown on the other items. And that's the, uh, completes the presentation of the GIBIC fiscal year budget. Our request is for the mayor and the commission to approve it.
Do you have, uh, is there a fund balance, do you have fund balance, or do you have surplus?
Sir, uh, off the top of my head, the, the annual, the annual surplus currently, based on incentives and commitments, is about six hundred thousand left over.
Okay.
Uh, I believe VIDA will take half of that.
Okay, the reason I'm asking is I think, I mean, some of this stuff is pretty high. I know, like I said, I know your board went through it, but I'd consider maybe in the future going forward, maybe some more in professional development.
Yes, sir.
That's always good.
They already spent half of it, sorry, they already spent half of it before it even got approved, or at least for the board.
Yes, sir, and there are, there are, there are the mandatory type A through TDC or through the state mandatory courses, like the tax class, uh, the staff and the board has to take it, and then there's also some mandatory classes that the staff needs to take, so we're in the process of filling those out.
And on the professional services, the marketing, that's kind of a one-time, is that gonna be this year only? Are you considering allocating?
This particular budget is for just this year, yes, sir.
Okay, alright.
Will be reconsidered again the following year. Uh, uh, to your point about what's left over in the budget, we do have a twenty-year outlook document that we can share with you, and it, it kind of shows, uh, what does it look like with five-year commitments? I think the airports are five-year commitment, I think SATA's a little bit longer, so it shows what that outlook looks like without any future major expenditures. And we can share that with you as well. Any other questions?
So, um, just bring us results.
Yes, ma'am.
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve, do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? Okay, motion passed, thank you.
Next, we have action item number four, consideration and discussion regarding the Greater Brownsville Incentive Corporation's implementation and compliance with section five zero one of the Texas Local Government Code.
I ask that this agenda item be included, um, and the reason was because, at that point, I still didn't know if the GIBIC board had already approved the budget. I think you all need to follow timelines strictly. You, your fiscal year ended October, or September thirtieth, or thirty-first, um, and so, uh, in the future, we need you to submit your propos, your budget for the next year. The state law says that the city commission has to approve all expenses before they're made, uh, before they're made, and so, the fact that you're getting it approved in November is, was of great concern to me. So, I'm glad that you finally got a budget to present, but in the future, I would ask that you please follow, um, the timelines, be timely.
And, and I just want the board to be real conscious of the money that they're spending and, and making sure they get a return on it. Thanks.
And if so, if the budget didn't clearly provide for one of the expenses that you're gonna get, then please bring it to our attention, and, um, we have meetings often enough that we should be able to work with your timeline.
And, and I have one more comment, but it's really not on the agenda, so I'll keep it to myself.
Okay. Alright, so that's, uh, there's not gonna be any action, you're, no need for that, okay.
I just wanted to vent.
Item number five?
Action item number five, consideration and action to approve the 2020 city commission meeting schedule.
No, I'm gonna send the city secretary. At this time, what we wanted to do is bring the calendar to you, as per city charter, we do need to have at least one city commission meeting per month. This is the calendar in front of you. Um, we'd ask if you, uh, would approve it, or if you all want to make any changes, because, uh, past practice has been in July that we only have one meeting, and then I know for the November and the December meetings, we have those meetings back-to-back. So, do you all like to make any suggestions?
So, I would like one meeting in July, that's my kids' off time.
I agree, which, not my kids, but I agree with my off time.
Yeah, because didn't we only have one this past July?
Yes.
Yes, correct.
July's usually the one where people may take vacations, so...
Right.
That may need to be adjusted, but if we approve this, we can always maybe cancel that, unless you want to just do it now.
Just do it now.
Rather just do it...
July seventh.
You want to just do the seventh? And then remove the twenty-first? Okay, that's fine.
And then August is budget month, no? So, we have a meeting every month, every week that month?
Every week.
Okay.
I thought that was September, is it August as well?
Typically, August, or?
It's more in August.
It's August.
I know this schedule like the back of my hand.
And then in September, we have a meeting where we have it on Monday and Tuesday.
Oh, that's what it was, okay.
Yeah. So, if we can reflect that on the calendar...
So, then, do I have a motion then, just to amend to remove the twenty-first, unless there's any other days?
Also, we need to adjust November and December.
November, December.
Okay.
Yeah, so do you want to move the seventeenth of November up to the tenth, and the fifteenth of December up to the eighth, and have them back-to-back?
Yes, let's do that.
That's fine with me.
That's what we typically do.
I mean, as long as everybody's okay with it, I'm fine with it. They're just, as long as somebody's writing this down.
That's good, uh, well, I would, I would move that we make those changes to this.
Agreed, second.
We have a motion and a second, uh, to amend as discussed, do I have, uh, any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed?
I had one quick question, where is chart is on this?
This is February, it's the last weekend of the month.
It's the twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth.
Okay, okay.
So, December stays the same, the first and the fifteenth, or are you asking to move it to the first?
First and the, uh...
First and the eighth, eighth.
So, it'll be November third and tenth, and then December first and eighth.
And then we take out the twenty-first of July, right? Taking out twenty-first of July?
Yeah.
Okay, alright. Motion passed, thank you.
Can we have a re-vote on that? I think it was, I think it was interrupted before we took...
No, the vote, everybody voted it passed.
Okay, I, I, I didn't catch that.
Okay, well, just for council's benefit there.
It made me feel asleep better at night, right?
Alright.
There is a motion and a second?
Yeah, there was a motion and a second, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
You can sleep now.
Next, we have action item number six, consideration and action to approve the Brownsville Border Film Commission bylaws.
Does anybody present this?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioner, uh, staff was asked to create an advisory body responsible for providing guidance and advice on the city of Brownsville's communications and marketing with respect to the Brownsville Border Film Commission. The bylaws are before you today, and I think this is, um, in a way, to support and foster, um, this specific media industries in Brownsville, um, with, that produce content such as motion pictures, television, commercials, corporate videos, music videos, documentary, still photography, and other emerging types of media and data.
Who drafted these? Do we know?
The city of Brownsville.
Actually, I can say that I'd had some hand in it on this one, uh, in conjunction with, with management.
Alright.
And also, we worked in conjunction with the, uh, with some of the past members of the film commission, so it's a joint effort.
Yeah, my concern was a conflict of interest, but I saw it's in there, so I'm good with it.
Thank you, sir, we did research the, in detail, um, to, to ensure that there was avoidance of that conflict, any conflict of interest through the creation of an advisory body.
Right, okay.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, uh, any further discussion?
Yeah, and what is the relationship to the, and have we already created the Film Commission Office of the city of Brownsville?
It's, it's housed within the communications and marketing department, which is a new department under the new structure, and so there, the director will begin November eighteenth, and we will make sure that we have an officer, just like you have a main street officer or liaison, you, we would have an officer assigned to...
Attend the meetings.
Absolutely, the minutes, the posting, the, everything that they need to make them successful.
That's good.
Okay, so we, um, any additional discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? Motion passed, thank you.
Next, we have, next, we have executive session. Uh, executive session A, attorney consultation pursuant to section five-five-one-point-zero-seven-one of the Texas Government Code to receive legal advice and counsel in connection with the city's rights, duties, privileges, and obligations related to the collective bargaining labor agreement between the city and the duly-recognized bargaining agent for the city's law enforcement personnel, the Brownsville Police Officers Association.
Motion to move to executive session.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? Okay. Back from executive session.
It is now seven oh seven. We have a possible action on any items discussed in executive session. Action, executive session A, consideration and possible action, if any, in response to the last collective bargaining proposal by the Brownsville Police Officers Association with respect to healthcare-based salary, contract term, and related items.
There's not gonna be any action on this item, uh, we've instructed council to go back, uh, to the representative for the union to try and get something done, so. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, those opposed?
Alright.
Stand and adjourn.